I'll take a walk off.
Mark.
I'm here.
Richard?
Yep.
Eric?
Here.
Oscar?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody have anything to add to the agenda now that we've taken a motion?
I saw the second.
Motion by Oscar, second by Eric to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Richard, you'll have to vote.
Oh, yeah, that's what.
Four zero.
I voted two.
Okay.
Uh, any new business? Here in on approval of the minutes from February eleventh, twenty twenty five.
I saw the.
There's a correction that needs to be made in there, so we'll have to have to wait.
What's that?
There's a correction that needs to be made in there, in this elder name.
Eric, where's that?
I was gonna say I am Ken.
You got it all set.
Has the wrong last name.
Last name, yeah.
Okay.
I saw one with the current.
Second?
Well, there's also just a small bullet to, uh, the members who are also the guests.
Oh, did I run them all together?
Well, you just got two on there. We were also guests, so.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Good, perhaps a second one?
Yep.
Got it. It's not the one.
Okay, and second? Approval with the, the second. But then, uh, a motion by Oscar, second by Mark, approve the minutes for those two changes. All in favor? Aye. I have both. Motion carries four zero. Anybody here for the public forum?
I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, we'll go on to the public hearing. No call agenda item seven eight, public hearing for case number CU dash twenty twenty five dash zero one, request for conditional use to allow an oversight, storage shed or structure in A one agricultural district. Does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from voting on this agenda? Like the record show, there are no abstentions. We have a forum of four commissioners present for the public here. Does any member of the planning commission wish to report expat aid communications? No. Like the record show, there are no expat aid communications, uh, been reported. Uh, secretary reported the notice for this hearing was published in Art Valley News on three thirteen twenty twenty five, which is at least twenty days advanced notice as reported. The property owner and surrounding property owners were also notified by letter at least twenty days, uh, prior to this hearing. Therefore, I declare no case improvements have been satisfied for this public hearing. I will now ask Dustin Bolton, or Bolton, to, uh, present a brief, uh, case report and recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting a conditional use to construct the storage shed or structure that it's, that exceeds maximum gross store area of one thousand five hundred square feet for properties over thirty acres and not more than five. The applicant wants, uh, to stores RV, other vehicles and other items. The property is generally located twenty four hundred sixty one twenty eight eight feet west of Hillside Avenue on the north side of one hundred and first street north, or twenty four ten east one hundred and first street north in the zone A one agricultural district. The property is not platted and is developed with a single family residence. Storage shed or structure is defined in the Kichai regs as a permanent or temporary structure used for general storage of personal items, including vehicle storage when required access servicing is provided to the right of way. The applicant is planning on the storage shed or structure to be forty two by sixty feet or two thousand five hundred, uh, twenty square feet, which is one thousand twenty square feet over the maximum permitted by section ten point four five of the zoning regs. Kichai zoning regulations state except as approved by conditional use, maximum gross store area shall be as follows. Lots over three acres but not more than five, one thousand five hundred square feet total between no more than three structures. Approval of this request would allow the applicants to construct the storage shed or structure as proposed. The subject property was developed in nineteen fifty. There have been no zoning actions on this property. Adjacent zoning and land use to the north, south and east are A one agricultural, single family and single family residential. To the west is E or A one recreational park. It's the county, the one oh one club and single family residential. Oliver Street is a paved local road, um, and public services are available up there, but not all of them. Same with the hundred and first street. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Context sensitive development helps preserve and enhance both the function and aesthetics of adjacent features. See recommendation number two below. Based upon information available prior to the public hearing, planning staff recommends that the request be approved subject to following conditions. The applicant and or contractor shall submit a building permit and provide engineer design plans. The storage structure must comply with specific use standards of section ten point four five. Development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. No hazardous waste or materials shall be stored in excess of regular household use in the storage shed. If the zoning administrator finds there is a violation of any of the conditions of the CU, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing other regulations set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is being voided. This recommendation is based upon the following. One, properties in the northeast and south are zoned as A one agricultural and developed with single family homes. Property to the west is Cedric County and developed with, as a community center. There is also a single family home in the area to the west. The request for a conditional use is in conformance of a twenty forty comprehensive plan. Three, one hundred and first street north is two lane arterial road with open ditches. Staff can not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed garage or shed. Uh, the subject site is currently zoned A one agricultural district, which permits a storage shed or structure that exceeds maximum gross store area by conditional use approval. The property is approximately one hundred ninety four thousand eighty six square feet and has a maximum block coverage of thirty. The primary residence and proposed oversized storage shed or structure would have an approximate combined block coverage of two point one five percent. Uh, five, the property is not vacant. It was developed as a single family residence in nineteen fifty. Six, staff does not see an issue with A one agricultural district developed with a single family home with an oversized storage shed or structure adjacent to other A one that have single family homes and a community center. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Eight, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts in public health, safety or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Nine, no input positive or negative has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Here we got an aerial photo showing the property right here. And two, on the left side or the west side of the map is the one oh one club. And down here is the, uh, residence, uh, which is not attached to the one oh one club. Again, county, and then A one on the northeast and south. Uh, community map. A site plan, I have not received the site plan, but I can show you an idea of where it's gonna go. But the site photo, the subject property facing north, east of the subject property, south of the subject property and west of the subject property. And let's go to it. There was a shed or a building here on the property.
Which is not there anymore?
It is not there anymore. It from, this, uh, aerial photo was taken from twenty twenty four. It is not there anymore. But that is the proposed site of it. And I have talked with the applicant, uh, that it does have to be a certain distance away from each of the, uh, side lot lines. Let's go. Do you have any questions, Paul?
You have a question? Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
I know, now ask the applicant if they'd like to speak to.
Just here to answer questions if you had any.
Okay. And what was your name?
BJ Miller, my wife Kim.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Uh, I will now open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this? And you haven't received any verbal written consent?
Correct.
Okay, well. If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and end close the public hearing. Uh, we will. Does anybody have anything to add to what Dustin went to on the, uh, the question? Anything there? I think we covered it, Dustin. So it sounds like we'll go with those. Just wait to get to it.
Okay.
And. Yeah, if there's nothing else, I'll continue taking a motion.
I moved up the planning commission adopt the findings and recommendations stated in the zoning administrative support for case number CU dash two zero two five dash zero one and forward a recommendation of approval for the governing body regarding the requested conditional use to allow an oversized storage shed or structure in A one architectural district. Agricultural district, sorry.
With the, uh, conditions.
Wait, yes, sorry. Subject to, subject to the following conditions as in the report.
Okay. I'll second. Motion by Eric, second by Oscar to approve, uh, the case CU twenty twenty five dash zero one with the conditions that Dustin had written in the recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries four zero. The recommendations and a written summary of the public hearing will be considered by the governing body after five eight twenty twenty five meetings to be held at seven P M. in this room. I will now call agenda item six, uh, six B, or seven B. Public hearing for case number Z dash twenty twenty five dash zero two, request for rezoning, uh, to the C two local commercial district. Is that right?
Should be R, R two.
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you.
He's got, uh, that's definitely someone that we have another.
Highlighted in the.
Oh, okay, he's just, he's just got written on the other page. Okay. So this is, uh, public hearing case Z dash twenty twenty five dash zero two, they have a request for rezoning at two multi-family residential district. Okay, does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain from voting on this agenda?
No.
Like the record show, there are, there are no abstentions. We have a forum of four commissioners present for the public here. Does any member of the planning commission wish to report expat aid communications?
Yeah.
Like the record show, there's no expat aid communications have been reported. The secretary has reported that a notice to this hearing was published in Art Valley News on three thirteen twenty twenty five, which is at least twenty days advanced notice as reported. The property owner and surrounding property owners were also notified by letter at least twenty days prior to the hearing. Therefore, I declare the notification requirement have been satisfied for this public hearing. I'll now ask Dustin, Bolton, and Bolton to present a brief case report and recommendation.
Thank you. Z twenty twenty five dash zero two, George Elder. Uh, the request, the original, uh, request is for a C two local commercial district. Um, I will go over that here in just a moment. Uh, the property owner notification letters and public notification posted in the Art Valley News stated the zone change requested was A one agricultural district to C two local commercial district, when it should have been R two multifamily residential district. The letters and notification in the Art Valley News also stated all five properties owned by the applicant were being changed. The applicant later stated he wanted the northern three properties rezoned. Letters were resent on or around March nineteenth, twenty twenty five with a corrected zoning request and limited to the nor, nor, as woo, limited to the northern three parcels. Article four point three of the Kichai zoning regulations designate what zoning clas- classifications are lower to higher intensity. Under KSA twelve dash seven five seven B, the planning commission can make a recommendation for a lesser zoning classification change without redoing the publication process. There is a, uh, the table for four point three that shows A one agricultural district as the least intense. R two multiple family, uh, residential district as kind of a midway point. And C two local commercial district as more intense. The city of Kichai zoning regulations also deny the use of a P D O, Plan Development Overlay District with, uh, A one agricultural district. The applicant property owner is requesting a z- zone change from A one agricultural district to C two local or the R two, which it should have been, to develop, allow for Airbnb's bed and breakfast ends and townhomes. The property is generally located four hundred feet of Hillside Avenue on the south side of one hundred and first street north or thirty five oh one east one hundred and first street north. Subject property is sixteen point nine acres and is developed for agricultural and commercial use. A one agricultural district does not allow townhomes and only permits Airbnb's bed and breakfast end by conditional use. Uh, the C two local or the R two, as it should have been, permits both by right. The property owner has plans to add the Airbnb's bed and breakfast ends and townhomes in phases. There are no plans for having apartments, boarding houses, group homes or tri slash quadplexes. See conditions below. The property owner has plans to convert part of the creamery into four Airbnb's. Case history, the property was annexed by the city of Kichai on March twenty fourth, twenty sixteen under ordinance sixteen eighty four dash sixteen. On April twelfth, twenty sixteen, two cases were heard and approved, seven zero, by the planning commission. Z twenty sixteen zero one zoning to A one after annexation and SU, which is a special use at the time, twenty sixteen oh one, to allow sawmill, furniture shop, ag- agritourism consisting of banquet hall, seasonal restaurant with kitchen, berry picking and sales with gravel parking. Property owners wanted to expand their business, but county regulations did not allow sawmill. The city of Kichai was able to annex the property and through zoning, conditional use and special use cases, the owners were able to expand their agritourism vision. Adjacent zoning and land use. To the north, south and west are farming and ranch operation with improvements. They are all in the county. To the east is farming, ranch operation with no improvements. Public services, one hundred first street north is two lane paved arterial road with open ditches. Uh, the future development plan map of the plan depicts that the subject property is appropriate for housing as stated in case SU dash twenty sixteen zero one. Little is said in the comprehensive plan in regards to commercial use in the A one district. The vision of the Kichai comprehensive plan does state Kichai has a small town filled with excellent access to metropolitan amenities. Residents enjoy safe and friendly neighborhoods where they truly feel like they are part of the community. Kichai's economic activity will be fueled by a diverse mix of goods and services in a vibrant arts and business district. Apple up, ample opportunities for recreational, cultural and leisure activities will enhance Kichai's quality of life. Vision and goals of the Kichai comprehensive plan build a strong and diverse local economy that attracts local retail, service and office businesses and promotes arts, crafts and other small enterprise businesses. Create sense of place through land use planning, development patterns, site design and community aesthetics. Optimize the efficiency of the required city services through land use patterns. Providing development pattern that supports economic development will maintain safe neighborhoods. Provide quality and context sensitive aesthetics in development and redevelopment. Recommendation, based upon the information available prior to the public hearing, planning staff recommends that the request be approved subject to the following conditions. SU twenty sixteen dash zero one shall remain in effect. The property shall not be allowed to have apartments, boarding houses, group homes and or tri or quadplexes. Recommendation is based upon the following findings. One, the properties to the north, south and west are county and zoned F for farming, uh, ranch with, uh, improvements, which means houses. Properties to the east, uh, is in the county and zoned F, farming, ranch operation, no improvements. Two, the request of a rezoning is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Three, staff does not anticipate significant increase in public utilities. Four, the subject site is currently zoned A one agricultural district, which, uh, does not permit townhomes. Five, the property was developed in nineteen seventy seven and has not been vacant. Six, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Seven, the request of a zone change is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Eight, staff does not expect negative impacts on community facilities. Nine, no input positive or negative has been received from the public at the time of staff report. And photos here, we see the aerial map showing the three northern parcels, which are the subject of the zone change. We have the zoning map here. Uh, future development plan map. And this guy did not print very well on your packets. I do apologize for that. But this is kind of a, uh, this is the basic site plan of what is going on now and the first steps. Uh, this is where the creamery is and the first parts of the Airbnb's are gonna be going in. This is what the floor plan will look like on the, I think this is the first floor. Main floor, yes. You've got two bedrooms. You've got a one bedroom over here. And then on the upper floor, it's a one bedroom Airbnb as well. And then we have site photos. Got subject property facing south, subject property looking west, north of the subject property and south of the subject property.
Can you go back to the picture before?
Yes.
Uh, next one. One more. So this building is gonna replace the creamery?
The creamery is staying in there. They are, the plans are to remodel the creamery and add the bedrooms or the Airbnb's inside the creamery itself.
The creamery here is that building that's eighty five feet from that?
From the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like there's, or maybe two or three, I mean, it looks like there's like three buildings or four. Sorry, there's just different, got different type buildings.
They're all, it's a one building.
Okay.
But it's, there's different architectural elements in each piece that you're seeing there. And that's why it shows up as a, kind of a, a number of pieces, but it's all one roof.
Now, this is, so it's just one, one building, right?
For now.
Cool, but if you was to put another building, won't you have to, like this, or? Is this platted?
Yes, these three properties are.
So this is platted, so.
Yes. Um, actually, I believe, uh, two of them are. Yeah, these two on the west side, excuse me, the east side over here are.
But if you were to put another building on that same.
On this bigger piece over here?
Well, you wouldn't there, but if you put another one on this one lot, you'd have to put it that way.
That's, I'm not a hundred percent. There is a possibility that it will need to be platted in the future. But at this time, my first instinct is to say no because the basic principle and use of the property itself is not changing. They're just adding towards what the original vision was.
Well, I mean, but like on a, a lot, you'd have to have a primary, one primary.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you can have secondary.
You can have secondary, but if it's going to be a primary use itself already with another primary on it.
You definitely.
Then it could go either way, yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, any, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Dustin? Thank you, Dustin.
Yep.
Oh, with one question, so you had it. That SU, uh, twenty sixteen dash zero one.
Yes, sir.
So what is that?
That is a special use case back in twenty sixteen before the zoning regulations were updated to not include a special use. But that one allowed the, uh, the property to continue having, or to go forward with having a sawmill, um, the berry picking, the, I believe it was cheese sales. Was that right?
And the retail?
Yeah, retail. It's kind of a conglomerate of a bunch of activities that you can do up there on the site.
Okay. Can you restrict, so R two allows the apartments, boarding houses and all that, or?
It does, but with the recommendation of, my recommendation is to say that no apartments will be allowed.
I just wondered if you can enforce that, if you change. I was just wondering if you can enforce that if you change the zone to R two.
But the, it is going to R, well, it should be going to R two depending on what commission votes today.
But if it did go to R two, you really could restrict for a day.
I, I can because it was, the zone change is under this with the agreement of no apartments. Count, uh, no apartments, uh, boarding houses, group homes or tri quadplexes.
Why were you doing?
Do what?
Why were you limiting uh what's already approved by the, the listing under R two?
Uh, to allow for townhomes and uh Airbnb's.
Right.
So that way, R two housing does not fit up there at un- eldersly parks or in that area. It should be remained as rural or agricultural, whatever you wanna call it, it should remain that. Single family housing, all that kinda stuff. But allowing it to be R two gives George Elder the opportunity to put Airbnb's and townhomes on the property in the future, which is the main goal. And that way, if we limit it, should George sell the, the property in the future in five years, we don't have another person come in, swoop in, buy it and then start throwing apartments on it. We have, we would have the ability to say no. And if that were to happen, if the property were to change hands, they would have to come through the process again and do a, a rezoning or a modification to the conditional use which would give the citizens and the city an, at least an opportunity to address it.
I was trying to figure out how you, how you put a condition on a zoning change. Uh, or like that, that you can do this, where you can do this, but you can't do this.
I mean.
I was trying to figure out how you enforce that.
Well, I, I trust George, he, he doesn't plan on putting apartments on there. Um, and I mean.
But the conditions will go on the D, right?
They should.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can modify it to where it says, conditions will be put on the D or the plat. That's a good point, thank you.
Sorry if I misquote. One way to look at it, Richard, would be basically the city would be protecting the citizens that live around him and at the same sense, being able to give him what he's asking for. Otherwise, we're gonna have apartment buildings going up all over the place if we don't have restrictions.
I, yeah, I understand, but I'm just, in the past, I can't remember ever where we've told you that you couldn't do everything that's, when we do a zoning change, I'm not sure you can restrict.
I don't, I haven't seen, right, I haven't seen in the regulations where we can't restrict it. So I don't see that there's.
You might, you might ask.
It, when I, when I send out the, the email to everybody, the attorney is included on that form review as well.
Yeah. Okay, so if we do, you, just, I would follow up with him because I'm, I'm not sure you can restrict it. But I, I mean, you totally know.
Fair enough.
Um, anybody have any other questions? For Jessica? Okay, well now ask Asper to step the podium and take your name and address for the record.
All right. Uh, George Elder, ninety-eight twenty-seven North Hillside. We talked through this uh project. What we're doing is taking the shell of the creamery and dairy that's there and moving it into residential housing. And we wanted to do that in a way that fit on the property. And the shell that's there, um, has enough space to do three units for sure, maybe four. And because there was that number that touch each other, it didn't fit a single family. And um, we have, since the beginning of the restaurant, wanted to develop um more residential aspects to the property. It's been an ambition, um, but the timing simply wasn't right. I was completely consumed by the dairy and creamery operations while we ran that. Um, but we closed our dairy and creamery last year in the spring. And we did that, we've taken a lot of time as a family and talked about it back and forth about what we wanna do with the property long term. The restaurant does fit well in the community and been patronized. The blackberries is a great part of summer. Um, and we've had numerous guests ask about nightly stays, um, being able to have somewhere that they could stay, have dinner or have a place where their family could come when they're out, coming in from out of town in the summer. Um, and combined with that, I've lived there, I was born on that property. I've lived there all my life except college. Um, combined with that, my parents are now at an age where they need an agent place space. So if you notice, one of the units or one of the pieces is a two bedroom and everything's designed ADA. So we want to, as we convert toward residential, provide a little bit of diversity honestly to the housing stuff that is there in that part of Kichai. Um, it's almost, if you kind of drive up and down, it's pretty homogenous as far as single family, varied size, but the height is almost identical. And uh, my parents and other people who I've watched in the community get older really can't keep one of those places up anymore. Um, but many of them, including my parents, want to stay in the place where they live. And so we've kind of taken all of those pieces and woven them into this and said, let's use this as an opportunity to convert this space, provide nightly stay, to provide an agent place space. And then if that goes well, our hope is to do a Airbnb type, um, uh, space above the restaurant. There's about two thousand square feet of unused space that we've never developed or done anything with. Um, and so our ambition was, uh, is to look at it as a, just a kind of slow movement to serving residential needs of that community. Um, aesthetically, uh, a number of neighbors asked me personally about the project, about what's going on. Um, my great desire is to preserve the countryside that I grew up in. Love it, it's, it's, it's a beautiful area. Um, but I also have raised kids out there and oftentimes really wanted a few more neighbors. Um, you have little kids, ten years old, twelve years old, like they're all over the place and the first thing they want is people around. So having something that is more dense as far as the residential footprint, that's limited in area, uh, with the countryside around it, um, to me seems like a amenity that the area would benefit from. It fits an asset that we have, which is the shell of the creamery. And it fits some long-term potentials for us as a small business to continue developing and uh serving the community there. And the townhome model that was mentioned, townhome is architecturally what you kinda have to call it, but it's something that touches, um, I have always talked about it and described it as a village row. You go to an English village in Yorkshire, um, you have houses that touch one another and those are not single family and are zoning or regulations. Those are townhomes. But when I think about long term, what I would hope for the areas that wilds are preserved, the density is kept low, but there are residential opportunities that are diverse for people there in that area. So, um, I hope that gives a little context to the request.
I, I got one question, is the, the lot that the creamery is on, is that on the same lot as for the house?
Where's the restaurant?
What?
No.
It's not, different lots, okay.
Those are different plots.
Where's the split of that? Well, in this picture that's up there, is that that?
You can see, yeah, the black dash.
Okay.
Lines.
And then three, the three lots that you're asking for is?
It's, it's this whole area, um, but it's this lot here which touches or goes down uh to the chisum here.
Are you moving, cause I don't see.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
This lot here, which is the restaurant.
Right.
And then the two lots over here, one of which is where the creamery is and the other one uh sits right behind it with access off to the road here.
So the parking lot's a separate lot?
Uh, the parking lot is in, uh, one of the lots over here, it's in the lot with the creamery, I believe, is that right, Justin?
Yeah.
Yeah. And uh, yeah.
What are those, are those, um, is huge pot, do you think?
There is, what we're doing here, we're gonna move it, um, to the southern reaches of the property. That's the intent, we've developed that into residence. Um, those are actually just drawn on this architectural drawing when we built the creamery. Um, but they're not precisely accurate.
Okay. So the lot that you're, that you're opposing aside, that's only thing down there except for?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Okay. What are those four circles?
These, um.
I know, I was looking right in front of the.
Oh, those are burrows.
They're what?
Burrows.
You're wrong, oh, you're so correct. Okay, okay.
I'm, I'm burrow.
Okay. Any questions for George? No. Thank you, George. We'll now open the public hearing. Anybody from the public push to speak up? And you haven't received any written or?
Nope, I had a couple of calls at the beginning when the wrong letters went out, some people called with questions and then uh, we sent the letters and I haven't heard anything since. But nothing, nothing opposing it, nothing for it, no, no input.
Okay. One last chance, anybody got any question? Okay, I hear by close public hearing. Okay. That's for you. Your thumb in the room. Anybody have anything to add to? Just trying. I don't either, I think. Those liners you put down there a little bit, so. I'll tell you what. If you don't mind, I'll make the motion. I move, planning commission adopt the findings stated in zoning administrative court case number C dash twenty twenty-five dash zero two and court recommendation approval to the governing body regarding the requested zoning, rezoning to the. R two.
R two.
Look there, make sure these fit perfectly, the R two, uh, multifamily residential district. Subject to the zoning conditions. That SU twenty sixteen dash zero one shall remain in effect. And the property shall be, shall not be allowed to have apartments or a house with group homes and or a tri quadplex. With the request that you double check that, we can actually restrict that with the governing body.
Okay.
I'll second. Okay, motion by, Richard Moore, second by Asker, to approve of those conditions. All favor on those motion here. When's the move supposed to start?
Uh, they're.
Where the intersection?
The intersection is this Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday, yeah.
Put block eight there?
Yeah, they should be, yeah, the whole intersection is gonna be down. They said if they were to do it in, uh, in halves, that it would take an extra ninety to a hundred and twenty days to complete it. This way we can just get it done, I believe we're looking at July-ish on everything being done.
One other question, will they give you a ticket now if you drive yourself?
Yes.
Yes.
They will.
Mm-hmm.
I think it looks like it's open.
I, it's not, but.
It's like a trap. I would do there though, they should have thought. I knew somebody had got tickets in the hundred minutes.
Sounds like Chris had talked you into going down that way.
Well, I thought, how people give you a ticket, it's like, the barricades are open up, you know?
So they can get there.
And local businesses and the houses that are.
People that work down there.
I get it. Well, be sure to wonder or something, is that? Okay, jumping off there.
I saw a move.
Motion by Asker, second, but Eric, do you adjourn, all favor?